All right, calling the Town Council, Monday, December 11th, April 3rd, the quarter.
Reporting in.
Prayer. Jimmy?
Our Lord and Father, we take this one more time to thank you so much for this little town. We thank you for many blessings that were bestowed on us, we ask you be with us. We ask you bless the members of this town and members of this council. Let's sing "Jesus" and sing. Amen.
Amen.
Slide seven. Kevin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, November 27th, 2023?
So moved. Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable, vouchers, and payroll.
So moved.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, 2024 meeting dates for the Town Council, planning zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Parks and Recreation Board. Who has that, or is it just a matter of reading to the record, or?
Well, it will be posted. I just need you to look at the calendar. So if you want to review it and see if you have any questions, there's a few variances due to holidays.
In April for us, the Town Council, due to the eclipse.
Yeah, and then in May, 28th, I'm sure that's Memorial Day. And then November 12th,
Would be.
Because we're off on the 11th for Veterans Day. The Park and Recreation Board member meetings got a couple of changes. January will be the 3rd, and September will be Tuesday the order. The Plan Commission has a few changes, too. Otherwise, they're always the first Thursday of the month. Town Council is the 2nd Monday and 4th Monday. And normally, part of the order is the 1st Monday. We also have the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then the annual meeting of directors for the Elsfield Building Corp. And that's with God's love. It is on Eclipse Day. God, are you okay with that?
We might want to rethink that one, so.
I'd definitely rethink it.
You want to move it to Tuesday, the 9th?
It's probably a good idea, yes.
So if we move to accept this, would we do an amendment to change it to April, Tuesday, the 9th, or?
Yes.
Okay.
As amended.
Got you. All right. Any council discussion on this? Public comment? Council action?
I move approval for the 2024 meeting dates as amended.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Resolutions 16-2023 to retroactively designate the Town Marshal and Fire Chief as exempt employees. Who has that?
Well, that was an option that was pursued at the beginning of the year, and so we just needed to have council confirmation on it. And maybe I could like to talk to them.
Well, it was suggested that we retroactively have them exempt, have it on record, since that's what we've been doing all year, so. All right, any council discussion on this?
So, since this is retroactive, has there been any pay that would have to be repaid?
No.
They've been following the exempt rules all year, but it just never had been official, officially declared. Our policy doesn't have many, much explanation on exempt positions.
So this is more of a getting the i's dotted and t's crossed thing to be in.
It is.
Okay, so if our policy doesn't have much information on exempt employees, what does exempt employees mean to the town of Elsfield?
Well, they no longer have put down overtime, and they have a more flexible schedule. They do still turn in time sheets to, you know, confirm their time and document their PTO and vacation, or sick or anything like that, holidays.
Okay, so we got that written somewhere?
That they need to.
No, that all the things you just enumerated, is that written somewhere in town code? I mean, because what I don't want to do is make them exempt employees and then later change on somebody. Do we have it for anybody that's exempt as to here's what.
There is a section in the code for exempt, and I'm sorry to say I haven't reviewed it recently, so I don't know exactly how it reads.
Part of that's because.
I mean, if we have it, we have it. If not, we need to grade it if we're doing it.
Yeah, it's in the current code, and we're getting ready to change our personnel policy, and it'll be in that as well.
Right, changes and suggestions were brought forth at the Personnel Policy Meeting. We just haven't acted on, I don't think changes, but clarification of language, I should say.
We have finished with a new personnel policy that will have that in there, and we need it written up by our professional vendor, and then we're going to ask you to pass it.
And I also added the exempt positions into the salary ordinance this year because now all of the supervisors are going to be exempt.
Any more council discussion? Public comment? Council action?
I move approval of. Resolution 16-2023 to retroactively designate the Town Marshal and Fire Chief as exempt employees.
Second. Add two seconds.
Give it to Pam.
Okay. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Okay. Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. And Scott, I will go to the code and.
I just want to make sure we had something. I mean, I'm not arguing it. I'm just.
I understand.
I just don't want to do something that somebody can later recreate what we didn't intend.
All right, ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2023-19 to create a fund for the general obligation bonds of 2023. Taking that to you again, Sandy?
Yeah, that's a first reading, and this is a requirement of bond. In the lease rental bonds that we've had for the town hall and the fire station and the police station, those were leases, and so we had the Elsfield Building Corp. With this one, it's the general obligation. We won't have a trust to hold the money. Whenever the bonds are sold, the money will be transferred to the town. So I have to set up this special fund so that I make sure we track that money and keep it isolated from our other funds.
Okay. Any council discussion on this or questions? Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 2023-20 to incorporate the salary ordinance into the town's personnel policy.
This was just a cleanup ordinance. A housekeeping matter that came to my attention, and the purpose of this ordinance is to make it clear that the salary ordinance that includes the designation of certain employees as exempt is hereby incorporated into the personnel policy.
Now, that's as a reference.
It's as a reference. It doesn't mean that each year, the personnel policy that's online with legal Indian, that American legal publishing is going to be amended to include the details of your salary ordinance. This just says if someone's, if an employee is considered exempt in the salary ordinance, they're considered exempt for purposes of the personnel policy.
Scott?
So who are we designating in the town as exempt? Who are those employees that are exempt?
Okay, it will be Kevin Patton.
The Fire Chief?
Yes.
By?
And the Police Chief. Okay, just positions, the Planner.
Okay.
The Street Commissioner.
Town Administrator.
And Town Administrator. That's a new position that'll be created next year for.
Okay. So all the department heads, right? Is the Town Clerk going to be exempt as well as an elected?
Clerk has always been exempt, as an elected official.
I say, I get it, but are we enumerating any of this anywhere?
Well, Indiana Code covers that for the.
Okay, as long as it does.
Yes.
And my question is, what if there is a conflict where, example, the salary ordinance doesn't say exempt and the personnel policy does, or vice versa? Which is, which do we adhere to and fix?
Well, that's why I put the language in here about the salary ordinance being incorporated into the personnel policy. So, I mean, the salary ordinance, I think, is going to control because that's where the pay is coming from.
Okay.
But to go back to Michael's point, I mean, we may want to revisit this after your independent contractor has finished making revisions to the personnel policy to make sure we're not doing two separate things in two different documents.
So I understand this right. What you're saying is that if on the salary ordinance, we say an employee is exempt, and the personnel policy doesn't say they're exempt, by us making them exempt in the salary ordinance, that's now going to make them, the personnel policy is going to reflect that exemption also?
Yes, because you're incorporating the salary ordinance into the personnel policy. So the point of that was to try to avoid having any discussions or challenges to who's an exempt employee. If they're exempt in the sal, for purposes of the salary ordinance, they're exempt for purposes of the personnel policy. That's to prevent the town from having to go back and amend the personnel policy every time the town, say, decides to designate another employee as exempt. I'm not saying you can't do that.
Right.
Because you could, but.
Okay.
This takes care of that. But to Scott and Mike's point, we'll have to very carefully look over what your independent contractor is recommending for changes to the personnel policy.
Will it be, I mean, our independent contractor is formatting it as any we.
Okay.
She made some suggestions, most of them we took.
Okay.
All right. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to council action?
It's first reading.
It's for first reading.
First reading, yeah. We've read it. All right. Ordinance is on second reading. Darla, ordinance 2023-17, is that the one we need to?
Yes, if you would, I would appreciate it if you would table it because the notice of the public hearing did not make it to the newspaper in time, so.
Okay, so the next meeting would be back on second reading?
Yes, I believe that's the 27th.
So ordinance 2023-17, increase in connection charges for the use of and services rendered by the sewage work system of the town of Elsfield, Indiana. As Darla had said, it did not make it into the newspaper in time for proper public advertisement on it. So the recommendation is that we table it till next meeting, and do we have any council action on that?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, ordinance 2023-18, fixing of salaries for budget year 2024. Is that you again?
Well, you know, this is just the salaries that were budgeted in the budgeting process. We did have an adjustment, since I sent this out to you. We added a part-time position into the clerk's line for a part-time accounting assistant, and that is actually to allow me to come in and do the annual report. And if there's anything else they need throughout the year that I might be of service to do that. We also added a part-time position to the utility billing office since the original publication, and the, seems like there was one other thing. Police.
The hours for the police at the bottom, that changed?
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, we had, with, sorry, with the personnel policy changes, we, when we had our discussions about it, we want everybody to be in line with fair labor standards, which was a small adjustment to the line for the police. It went from 165 hours a month, or 28 days, to 171, which is the guideline for fair labor. And so then we're going to go to a 14-day schedule. So that 14-day was listed at 82 and a half hours in this policy. Today, we changed that to 85 and a half hours before they'll get overtime in a 14-day period. Thank you for the help on that.
All right, council discussion or questions on this? I actually have one on utilities. This is the first I've heard that I can recall as a hiring assistant was assistant billing? Is that what you said were?
It was a part-time billing clerk.
Okay, is, just some explanation behind the thought process on that?
Well, the thought process is Amber, actually, she's been doing the work of Town Administrator for quite some time now, and as we move into the new year, everybody knows we're transitioning from someone that's been Town Clerk for 26 years. We have a new clerk. We have a pretty active schedule as far as projects and building and what have you, so it's an active time for the town, probably unprecedented. So Amber's probably not going to be able to be at full part of the staff all the time in the utilities office. So we've promoted Sean Meadows to billing office manager, and that leaves us with two people in there. Normally, we've had three people. A few years back, we had four people in there, so we took a half measure and decided that we're probably going to hire somebody part-time to take care of the peak times during the month, and we think that'll work well. So, you know, maybe save us a little money, but we think that we needed the position so we could hire somebody for it as opposed to a full-time billing clerk.
Okay. Any other council questions or discussion? Any public comment? Okay, any council action?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-18, fixing of the salaries for budget year 2024.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, envision Elsfield update? Do we have anything, Dan?
The only thing I have to report is if anybody is part of the Advisory Board, we're having an Advisory Board meeting this Thursday, December 14th, at noon, and it will be at the Chamber Office, not Town Hall. And we'll be discussing updates on projects, standards for community projects, UDO, and perhaps see some more plans for the new barn at Stewart Park.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, the old business, changes to rural transit, changes to rural transportation. Who, we've talked about this, and we had guests last meeting, so where are we with this, and who wants to go?
Well, I guess I'll go on the first pitch. So, you know, the last meeting, everything was explained how rural transit, for a lot of different reasons, may have to end their service because of funding. The county has proposed helping to fund rural transit directly to keep buses on the road and take care of riders that come from the county and the town of Elsfield. They've asked the town of Elsfield to fund their share of the ridership, and we've been presented with information and costs, and basically, they need $132,000 from us to continue with ridership, and that would be for a year, and that's an approximate based on ridership. There is a cap to that, so that's something I talked to Chris about, and she can speak to it here in a second or so, about kind of having a governor on how much you have to spend or you'd be exposed to, which might help a little. The county, I think their share is 80.
Eighty-eight thousand?
Eighty-eight thousand, thank you. And so they base this on ridership. The ridership was, according to Chris and the county, the ridership was counted based on our boundaries and not an assumption that they were part of the community is actually boundaries, just for anybody that's going to ask that question. And so if we do not come to an agreement, and tonight would be a good night to have an agreement if we can, you know, there's a good chance that there'll be, at the very least, an interruption for rural transportation, but more than likely, it'll cease to exist. So we've been looking at how we might fund the project, and, you know, there's a couple things I'd say. We went from not being any part of rural transit or being in the business at all to now being exposed to more of a cost than the county. And so that's, that seems odd to me, but it's supposedly about ridership. I know the county's helped rural transit in the past. They bought them electric buses, and I'm pretty sure they spend a substantial amount of money besides the 88,000 to help rural transit, you know, get through the day. So, you know, I'm not sure how this all works for us in a county of 140,000 population, and these are rounded numbers. We have 6,700 people, you know, compared to the rest of the population. When you think of the city of Blimington, they're 12 times larger than we are according to population, and when you think of the county, they're 10 times as large. Yet, it seems, you know, we're going to be saddled with a large portion of the money it'll take to make rural transit run. It may be fair, it may be the correct amount of money. I've yet to figure out how this all works. I've just not had time to study it. I mean, it would have been nice if we'd been talking about this a year ago, so we could have really vetted it. And when it comes to the money, if we had $132,000 to throw around, we could have just said, let's do it and move on. When we started our budget this year, which we've already passed, this was not on the radar. I always start the budget process every year by reminding the department heads, we're, you know, we have six cows to feed, and we always have a five-cow feeder. It's tough. It's tough, the things that we want to do, things that are important to the town, services that are important to the town, we cut into those services by virtue of we don't have enough money to fund everything we'd like to do. We're short of policemen. We're short policemen at night. Sometimes, we're too short with our police force. Fire department, the same way. Yeah, we cover all the shifts, but people have to be off. Our firefighters, even when they're off and they're on PTO, they all have their radios, and when the bell rings, they go to work. We just don't have enough people, and we don't have enough money. And so our social services, because we're a small town with a small budget and limited monies, our social services have always been limited to police and fire. So this social service is new to us, and it's a large enough expense that it won't go unnoticed. If we try to take the money out of the general fund, yeah, we've probably got enough to take care of it for five to 10 years, but in five or 10 years, it'll bleed us dry under the format that how we get money and spend money, it could ruin our general fund, and we've spent a lot of years putting a general fund together that protects our town financially. With that said, we haven't talked about how important it is that we try to find a resolution where we can help with citizens of our own town. I think 200, not to be exact, but it's approximately 200 riders that are from our town, and we need to try to work this out. So we went through our budget, and we looked, we didn't look at the general fund. I just think it's a holy grail, and it's a last resort for us. So our lit ED, we've spent most of it, and there may be some change in it, and if push come to shove, we might be able to take some money out of it for one year, knowing that it'll probably regenerate itself from funding through the next year, but that's not where we would find our money to have a program that would go on and on and on. So really, we don't have the money to fund this project. We think we could take money that we have from money that's sent back to the general fund from the individual departments. We're pretty sure we could fund this for maybe six months. But we'll have to put our, you know, we'll have to get, we'll have to get started trying to figure out how to permanently resolve this project. Any money that was returned to the general fund is how we built our general fund up to this point. It's one of the funding mechanisms we've used, and it's been tried and true for several years. For six years, we've had $140,000 sent back on average to our general fund. This year, it's going to be about a third of that, and it's due to inflation, and gas was high. It's not high now, but it was high, and materials and growth, you know. So we're only, probably we'll get a third of that, but we think we could put together some money to keep from having to tell rural transit they're out of business. That's what I've got to tell you. You guys need to decide what you want to do, and ladies, and then we'll try to make it work.
Did we pay this monthly? Was this like a?
Well, that was, I think Chris suggested that maybe. Well, that was, I think Chris suggested that maybe we could pay it monthly and, you know, 132,000, that's $11,000 a month and it may not be that much. And so no matter how we pay it, and that would be the way we would pay it, we would have to get to work immediately to try to solve the funding problem sooner than later. I mean, we wouldn't want to wait till June or July to figure this out. So, but I don't, I can't go any further than that until I know what the board wants to do.
So it kind of sounds like if we do anything tonight to continue the funding, what you would like to see is us be very proactive with this and revisit it regularly. A, find out where the money's coming from and two, see if we can continue to do it, correct?
Yeah, I think everybody should be on notice and be ready to work out a permanent solution. I mean, I know that, you know, we're part of the county and I know the county and the town or the city of Bloomington, they are funded sometimes from grants and sources that we don't have access to because we can't match the funding or the grants. I mean, you know, we're just, we're just, we're just a little small town in a big county with a big city next to us. The ARPA money that was laid out a couple of years ago, it was 54 million, 54.5 million dollars, I'm pretty sure I'm right about this, was given to the Monroe County as a whole. Of it, we got like point zero two seven five of it, percent of it. And the rest went to Bloomington and the county. So, you know, when it comes to funding, I'm not an expert about all this. I don't know. But it just seems like the bigger you are, the more resources you're allowed to look into receiving. And so, you know, we're going to need some help, obviously from the county to figure this out, but I'm just, you know, this is where we're at.
Okay. We will get to public comment and discussion. I know we have one note online, but before that, council discussion on this.
I'd like to reserve comments after we hear from the public and potentially some other representatives here, at least on my end.
Well, I'd like to just say that I understand everything, Mike, you're saying that the money, I mean, this was thrown at us and it's a big shock. It's a big amount, but it is our residents and we have to do something in order to provide this service for them. I agree, we've got to keep on top of this and try to figure this out, but I think tonight we just need to move ahead. And if we have to bite it for a year until we figure this out, we're going to have to. There's a lot of our residents and the elderly that depend on this service. And if we take that away from them, it's just, I mean, it's going to be horrible for them. So I agree with everything Mike said, but it's just going to be one of those things. We're just going to have to, you know, tighten up and try to do it the first year and look for alternatives for sure.
If I may, I just want to point out that we probably would like to say that we don't want to take it away from them, but actually the mechanism to afford this was taken away from them via the state.
Yeah, I agree with that, but it's just, it's our responsibility to help them too. I mean, they do pay the taxes and it doesn't matter where it comes from. I mean, state, county, wherever, it's all part of their taxes. So, I mean, it's just one of those things that we're going to have to, you know, like I said, dig in and try to figure this out. But, you know, I would, it would just sicken me to take this service away from them within two or three weeks. So that's about all I have to say.
There will be some proposals. Bloomington Transit has a proposal. We've talked to them about their proposal. I think the county's proposal right now, I think, you know, if I remember right, Julie Thomas said that they'll be paying for theirs with ARPA money till they can figure out how to move forward. So there'll be a funding mechanism suggested. I'm not sure who will make the first move, but it could be a county tax, just so everybody knows how this may end up. And so if it is a county tax, then I think, I think, and like I said, I'm not an expert about all this, that would fund the entire project. Us being county people, I think that's how it works, but those are kind of things we need to talk about, maybe argue about and give and take on the subject. But there will have to be a funding mechanism at the end of this, I'm almost sure, after talking about it for two or three days.
In the county, I know I've said this before.
We all in the town of Ellisville pay county tax. So if they had this rate and they could cover it with the whole county, I don't think Ellisville should have to pay again and pay twice for the service. I mean, we're just 6,655 people. That would be almost $21 for every person in town annually.
Well, the city of Bloomington or B T Transit told us their residents pay $78 a person in taxes.
A person or per household?
Was it per person? That's, I think that's. Was it per household? Okay. Per household, because they have to match the grants. Let me ask Chris Meyer if she's still, are you still there, Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay, if we move forward, do we have to commit for a full year? Can we commit month to month to see where this goes? Can we quarterly? What can rural transit do to kind of meet us halfway with this?
I think I shared last meeting that, you know, I'm going to work with whatever we need to do in order to secure transportation security for folks. And going month to month is fine, but what I told Mike earlier today too, is to keep in mind, you know, we're going to be making reservations, right? People are going to be reserving pickups, so we don't want to just have one month and then at the end of that month say, okay, we're not doing next month. So there needs to be some mechanism for, you know, being reasonable with, we're not going to be more than, you know, if we're going to do three months right now, we're going to know by mid or beginning of February if we're going to continue past then or something like that.
Okay.
And I just want to say, you know, if, if anything, I completely understand the position that you're in and especially the fiscal implications. You know, I wrestle with trying to manage and make all of the pieces fit for transit as well as a nonprofit in general all the time. And so I totally appreciate the situation that you're in. I don't like to be in this situation and I hope that there's some, at least short-term solution. And like I talked with Mike, that there would be, have to be some sort of long-term funding mechanism that would involve likely taxes that would be distributed in some even way for county versus city going forward, but that's not going to happen for Jane Moore first.
Okay. Any more council questions or comments before I open up to the public? Okay, public comment. We have one online. Respectfully request funding, rural transit be tabled tonight until it can be studied relative to our other needs for funding services for the town that the town must provide its citizens by law. I don't think we'd be cutting any of those services. It could stifle us going forward, but. And unfortunately, rural transit needs to have some continuity. All right, anybody in the audience have anything to say? All right. More council discussions since.
Well, I guess I'll go. Let me start up front. This is an incredibly difficult situation we find ourselves in. I think we all acknowledge that. When you look at this from strictly the, and that's not even fair, so not strictly, but if you look at it from the emotional side of it, absolutely, we need to do something without a doubt. However, when you step back from that just a minute, you have to consider bluntly the numbers that we're dealing with. And I'd like some more clarity on that before we get down. So Chris, if we can talk later about some clarity on numbers, that'd be great. So when you look at, according to the data we've been provided, that's 4,155 trips to or from Ellisville that we're being asked to fund every year on the aggregate is what we see here. Supposedly there are 200 users, so that boils down to 21 trips per user per year. However, I think if you look at it from the rationality side of it, we don't have 200 people making the same amount of trips every year. We're more likely than not, and I'm guessing here, but more likely than not, you have a group of what I'll term at this point, super users who are using it much more than some of the other users. That's not good, that's not bad, that just is what it is. But if you look at it taking the, what I think is very poor census numbers, just because of the years of COVID, I don't think our census is anywhere close. I don't think Bloomington's is close, Monroe County's is close, but we're basing it on that, so we'll go from there. So if you look at 200 users and the population that the town has, you're looking at roughly 2% of the town's population is now going without transportation and we are being asked to fund that. On the surface, again, emotionally, that's something there. But I guess my question is, is when we all came to the town, we all moved to the town, we understood that we were not, and I'm going to make an alliteration here and I want people to understand, it's not equivocable, but it's a point. We knew we weren't going to get trash service. We would have to subcontract for that to somebody else. The town was not going to underwrite that. We knew that. When we moved into the town, we knew other things that certain other municipalities provide are not going to be able to be provided here based on our tax rate, based on what we have. So now all of a sudden, in the last couple of weeks, we are being asked to fund a transit system or portions of a transit system that the rest of the town didn't say we were going to provide, we've never provided. So let's now and then not say that the rest of the town doesn't decide we want trash service and we're asked to fund that. It comes down to just the funding priorities and I get the emotional side. I desperately want to fund this. I wish we had the money to fund this. And I'm not saying we don't fund this in the long run. What I'm saying however, is that we are desperately short of firefighters. We are below the national standard, just flat out. Even when you look at having mutual aid come to us almost automatically, we're still below the numbers nationally that it takes to extinguish a house fire. We are. We're below the number of police officers we're supposed to have. We're below the number of people in the street department we're supposed to have. We're below utilities, we're below planning, we're below all of those things, but yet the town continues to function and it's growing. 10 years from now, I hope this is not even a conversation. $132,000, you have no big deal, take it out of whatever, we move on. However, right now, we simply don't have the money to do that unless, and I'll put this to my other colleagues up here, and I don't mean this to be offensive, what are we cutting? Are you going to cut a fireman, policeman, somebody from the street, somebody from planning? What are you doing? Because while you might not take the job now, you do this now at this level, you are not going to add another firefighter next year. You are not going to add another officer or somebody in the street department. You will not do it for the foreseeable future while you're paying this tab. And you're already below those standards. We all pay, and I mean this in all seriousness, guys, love you all, but I really don't want to ever have to use the services of Ellisville Fire Department in my house. That's a bad day. I don't want Ellisville P D at my house. That's a bad day. I don't want street department having to do something in front of my house. That's a bad day. But we all pay for those as quote unquote insurance to make sure those resources are available. We don't have enough resources out there right now to ensure the rest of the town, the other 6,400 people, that we're going to be there when you call. We don't have it. We're kind of a one-trick pony. Yeah, they could go put out one fire. And then if somebody else has a crash on the other end of town, they're going to wait for City of Bloomington or one of the townships to come service that. If you're having a heart attack while they're on fire, guess what? You're waiting a while. Somebody's coming as fast as they can get there, but you're still waiting. So in the end, I have to look at it from not the emotional side of it, but where is the money being spent for the greater good? And the greater good is continuing to grow the town and to provide the insurance that, the insurance that we have to provide. I've seen things happen over the years where there weren't enough fire people on the scene and deaths occurred. I've seen officers get hurt because there weren't enough. I've seen other things happen because there weren't enough to just simply become the default standard to, well, the town's going to pay for it. None of us ever signed up to pay for a transit facility or a transit system. I wish we had the money to do that. I really truly do. I know some of the people who use this system and man, I really think they need it. We need to find something. Is it a county tax? Okay. Don't even know that we can do a town tax, but who up on this board is going to vote for a town tax to pay for this? That's just not something that's likely in the cards. So the question becomes, what do we do? Now, I don't think it's fair, quite frankly, and I'm sorry I'm taking too much time. I don't think it's fair, quite frankly, to just say January 1, two weeks from now, you don't have a ride. So I think for at least a couple of months, if not the first quarter, we should fund this while alternatives are sought. However, with that being said, I cannot count and it's paying for the entire year because if I'm right and we have these 50 to 100 super users, now it becomes even more. And I'd like, I'd like to also see where are these trips to and from? If they're to and from doctor's office, medical appointments, that is one thing. That's a completely valid issue that maybe we need to take a greater look at. But I know that rural transit takes people other places and that's because they've been allowed to over the years under the terms of the state grant. Wonderful, that's phenomenal that they've had that ability. But the question becomes, is the rest of the town willing to pay for those other trips? Whether they be to a grocery store or a department store or whatever else? Or are there other resources out there that the people who are using rural transit for now to get to those places could avail themselves of? Or could we help them find some way to do it? I just simply at this point in time would love to be able to say, yes, let's go and do it. But I just don't see the way we do that while we're trying to grow into a point where we do have the adequate resources on hand for you having a heart attack at 2:00 a.m. while they're fighting a house fire or a trash fire or they're on a traffic accident or when someone's trying to break into your house and the only officer on duty is on the other end of the town on a crash. And now you're waiting for the county or the city or the state police to show up. Here we are being asked to fund something. It's out of one hand into another. You take this away, well, guess what? Sheriff's Department's going to have to help out. City's going to have to help out. City Fire's going to have to help out because we're shorting the resources we're supposed to have on tap. There's just no other way to look at this. If this was 3,000 people taking the ride, we would really have to look at our priorities. But I ask this council the same thing that I posed to one of my colleagues on the phone the other day. There's a, there's a special, no, this night, there is a charity in town who helps 300 to 400 people a week. A week. And last year we gave them $3,000 or $4,000. The food pantry. They're helping people eat, but we're not giving them the funds. But here we are considering 50 to 100 people probably as the super users providing them transportation. Don't get me wrong, I wish we could do it. I want to do it. I want to find a way. But when we look at the equality of that, who's doing more good in the long run? I simply can't vote for this like this.
I would like to ask the supervisors and everybody, do we have any funds, even if it's a small amount of funds, that can fund this for the next, the first quarter that's unaccounted for?
We do.
What?
We'll have to take the money that has not been used in each department and we could probably give a court. And it's money that normally goes back into the general fund, but as I said earlier.
Right, that's going to be, I'm talking about, do we get any other funds from the state that we haven't discussed yet?
I'll let them speak for themselves, but I know the answer.
Okay, I'll say, do we get opioid funds?
We do, but they're restricted and they're probably.
There's an unrestricted portion of it.
It's like $15,500?
It's not a lot, but I'm saying it may get us to the first quarter.
There's not that much cash in there yet. I budgeted that because that's looking at what we're supposed to get next year too. I think there's maybe 12,000 in there now, which. I think there's maybe $12,000 in there now, which would...
But we talked about this. They're supposed to come up with a plan, help me out when I need it. They're supposed to come up with a plan on how to use the restricted funds. If they come up with a plan that's a little short than the unrestricted funds, I assume would be needed. So we looked at that, but, I mean, truly, the, the money that we would want to look at would be money that is turned back in by each department.
And the thing with that, it wouldn't be available immediately. We would have to do an additional appropriation to spend that out of the, basically, that would be cash operating.
Right, we'd get it back.
And I assume we wouldn't get our first bill until after January.
And...
The opioid funds, I did, you know, budget for it, and it doesn't have a plan, so that is the only money that I know of in our system that doesn't have a plan.
Exactly, and...
But it's not very much money.
No, it absolutely is not, I know that. Because last year, I was looking at it, too, before anything even came out, and I'm just looking to be creative, and another aspect is, well, jumping ahead, I mean, we're not, we won't talk about this aspect yet, but we might have to, is the agreement for CATS.
Well, there is a new law that's coming into effect that all of our meetings have to be digitally archived, and you will not find a private company that can do that for any less than CATS. And we already have a lot of history there.
Absolutely.
And so, I mean, that, it's not law yet, but it is going, it has been passed, and it's...
Yeah, it's just not in effect yet. I think January 1 goes in.
I'm not sure the effective date, but...
July, okay.
I was so tickled when I heard that, that we already had it in place.
But Zoom would not count for that, would it?
Pardon?
Zoom does not count for that, does it?
We don't have a way to archive it forever, no.
Okay. Yeah, and I say that CATS, I can go back forever.
And CATS also has the other, correct me if I'm wrong, don't they have it in other media forms for impaired people?
Yes, they do.
Which is also a requirement.
What was that, Scott?
Well, again, no offense to CATS, but just because they record it and store it, doesn't mean they have to keep it forever. That's on the town. So us paying CATS to do it and saying, hey, all is good, that's not going to get it done, guys. Because we don't have control of what CATS does with that archive. They could decide tomorrow morning, we are not going to continue to pay to store this, anything from this date beyond, we're jettisoning. So we're going to have to come up with something else for that. CATS cannot be the permanent solution, because we have, we do not have control of that. And if I believe, if I read the law correctly, it says the town is responsible, the municipality is responsible, to making sure those are available.
And I thought by...
The library is neither.
I thought by contracting with CATS, then that transferred some of that responsibility to them.
I don't believe so. To film it, sure, because we've contracted for that. And they have been providing it, but there is nothing that says the library board can't decide that the storage costs are too much, and they're not going to do it any longer.
And it's also not, it's not enough to fund the whole thing. Tell you what, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion for this.
I'd like to add something real quick. Several years ago, I worked with Area 10 quite closely with the director down there, and I know for a fact, probably 80 to 85% of these rides are people that have disabilities, that has no families, ride to and from work. These are the elderly that gets to and from grocery stores to eat, to survive. Also, doctors' visits. They go back and forth to the doctor's visit. This isn't a luxury, we're taking you to the prom and we'll pick you up at 10. This is a need for the elderly and the handicap. And to say that we can't fund that, it just, I, I hope none of you ever have to deal with a situation like that. But it's part of life. I don't care if it's five or 200 citizens. It's a need that has to happen. And I just want to state that.
Well, Dan, I'll ask, and again, this is, I don't necessarily disagree with you, and my mother's used this, but do you have any suggestions where the funding can come from?
Well, right now, we do have money in our general fund, and I am 100% agreeing with Mike and everyone else up here. We've got to look into this, but we just can't stop this service. We just can't stop it.
Well, Dan, let me ask this, and I don't mean to be argumentative, this is actually a question. I agree with you. I want the service to continue. But I guess bluntly, my question is, how did it become our responsibility? Because we've never done it.
Well, I agree with you, but things change. Things change every day.
I, I agree with that. But how did that become our responsibility to run a transit facility, or transit service, or fund a transit service when we never have before? Now, some of the doctor's visits, you're right, those have to occur. A lot of things have to occur, without a doubt.
Right.
And I don't want to belittle or make it seem like I don't care about the others, because I truly do, and I would love to find a solution to this. But the question becomes, how does it, or why does it fall to us to do this? Now, when they talk about City of Bloomington funding BT Transit and those things, because they're running daily bus routes, there's none that come into Ellisville. So that, that's, that's kind of one of those apples and oranges things where, well, they pay $70, yeah, but they also have buses running 18 hours a day, or whatever it is, that they can jump on, whatever. This is a very selective service. The question in the end that I pose is, where is that money best spent? Is there another way to come up with the money? Is there something else to do? Is there somebody else to partner with? Or do we go out and do it ourselves? Do we hire somebody to do it ourselves?
And Scott, I agree with you 100% on all that, but as of what I'm saying right now, we have at least got to give them six months, guarantee that we will take care of this, until we look into these alternatives.
I can do the first quarter, absolutely, and then we'll evaluate from there. And if we need to extend, we need to extend.
We just can't.
But to say we're going to do a year upfront right now, I just can't...
Right, and I didn't say that. But I say the service has to continue at least six months to give these people opportunity to even maybe find different ways in and out. Like I said, you're, you're talking the physically disabled, the elderly, they may have, a statement that you made earlier, it just kind of hit me, about trash service and stuff like that. When they moved here, they knew this service was, it was there for them to do. Now, if that service wasn't there, I'd say probably 90% of them wouldn't moved over here, because...
Well, before you go down that road and paint me into a corner, I told you upfront that it was just an example, that we knew that the service wasn't being provided by the town. Upfront, it was being provided by a third party. We could talk about animal control or other things as well, but again, let's, let's talk services the town does and doesn't provide, was the analogy I'm trying to use here. We do not run a transit service. We never have. I am all for trying to extend this until other options can be found, but I cannot commit the other 6,600 people, which I, in my mind, deeply believe it's many more than that, to citizens and putting them, and continuing to put them behind the power curve on everything else that we're supposed to be providing, that we have to provide, because there is nobody else to provide.
And that's kind of what we're talking here, Scott.
No, it's not.
It is, to me.
You can't go out and contract with somebody else for another cop to come, or another firefighter to come. And you're right, there's certain people who don't have the financial resource to do that, so we need to help find a solution.
I think we've got common ground on that. I do have to, Chris Myers?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, are there any, like, clusters of places where people are picked up from? I mean, or is it all over Ellisville? I didn't know if there's any, like, certain area where a lot of calls emanate from, that if they're providing, like, assisted living or stuff, maybe they can help offset some of this cost, as, because they have a lot more experience with getting Medicaid and Medicare reimbursement for things like that. I just didn't know if there's any of these assisted living homes that we need to be reaching out to, to see if they can partner with us.
So I don't have a cluster map in front of me of the trips that were in the past year in Ellisville, but I can tell you, just based on calls that I've heard coming, you know, you've got pockets of places like Richland Apartments, you have Governor's Park, but you also have people who are just out in, you know, the town, that are in those congregate senior housing, for instance, that are reliant on transportation. You know, Richland Beale Austin Healthcare Center doesn't use it very often. The assisted living, can't think of the name of it, just outside of the town, or what I consider just outside of the town in my mind. I don't believe they've ever used it, but, I mean, that certainly could be looked at. And, you know, I, I want to say, whatever funding that you can actually provide, you know, it's a per-trip basis, it's going to be based on the cost, you know, this is, we're talking about something separate in the, in, in some respect than what we do day-to-day. We run a public transportation program, so, you know, it's demand responsive, anybody can call and make a reservation, and some of those people go to Kehe, right, for employment. They have no vehicle, and so they're using that for their transportation to and from until they save up enough to get transportation on their home. But, you know, we're talking about privately funded, parallel service, where if there's only so much funding available, there are only so many trips that can be provided based on that funding. That's the same sort of operation that we do in our grants right now. We deny trips right now because we don't have enough funding, we don't have enough drivers, and we can't support those drivers because we don't have enough local match to pull down the federal funds to make that work. So, I mean, it all works within the budget, and if there's only so much funding available for providing the trips over the next three months, then those are the amount of trips that we will cap for Ellisville, one way or the other. You know, I mean, that, that's one way to work at it.
Okay. I also want to say, I've talked to Representative Bob Heaton. He's aware of the situation. He is seeing what can be done, because, I mean, from his, in his district, eventually, you're going to have places like Terre Haute and Spencer have the same issue that's going to have to do this. So this is a ticking time bomb for a lot of small communities that are growing. So I'm hoping to get some good resolution to that soon. But in the meantime, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we fund rural transportation on a per-trip basis until, for the first quarter, but at the first meeting in February, or first meeting in March, we put it on the agenda to reevaluate what we do going forward.
Where's this funding? Is it coming from the departments turning it back towards the general?
Yes, it would have to.
So the question, and order of clarity. Instead of saying first quarter, how about we provide a date? That way, there's a firm date. We're not, is it on this day, or is it this day they end?
I would say April 1st.
So it ends April 1st?
Yes.
So through April 1st, we're going to fund trips?
Right.
March 31st to finish the quarter, yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, we're not saying we're cutting, cutting it off, but we're not making any commitments. I mean, we're going to reevaluate, right?
Yeah, we just...
Because we may...
Assuming we have continuing dialogue with the state and other folks, because I would agree with you, that they're the ones that caused the problem. You're going to have to weigh in on helping the problem.
Yeah, I also agree. That's a good compromise right now. And we can, you know, as, as long as we don't lay back and not do anything until April 1st, I think that's a good compromise. So I'll second the motion.
And then clarify, the date would be March 31st, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Chris. Hey, Chris?
Yeah?
Do we have a lot of people here from Stone Belt that's in Ellisville? Do you know that, right that...
We have a handful of residents from Stone Belt that use, use it for Stone Belt, yes.
Okay, does Stone Belt not put any money in? Because I know, I used to work there, and I know they get money for each of their clientele that's there, that maybe they could help cover.
Yeah, those, those that would be Stone Belt qualified would, would be something that we could look at for, for those costs, yes. We, we, we get some help from Stone Belt that actually covers Owen County residents and Lawrence County residents as well.
Yeah, because I know when I worked there, they even had people that worked there that a lot of times transported them back and forth to the doctor. So we just wanted they could do that, take it upon theirself to do that, or maybe like help pay some of the cost per person that they have transported.
Yes, and it'd just, just be like the fares that would come off of the top of the cost, so that invoice at the end of the month would include that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Chris, and I apologize, we may have gotten our wires crossed when we're asking for, for data from you. I understand from what either got said by you or somebody up here, that we have people who are writing it daily? Is that correct?
Daily?
Yeah, daily to and from work?
No, not usually. I mean, sometimes we do, but, you know, we have some employees at Kehe, but a lot of the, like, just like Danny said, a lot of the people who use it are using it for appointments, too.
Yeah, right, okay. Is it possible to get an anonymized list of what the destination was daily? Not where it originated?
Our dispatch software, when we do trips, will actually have the GPS coordinates on there, as well as the addresses. So if you're going to, you know, require that as part of your invoicing, that's something that we can talk about.
Well, I, what I guess, I'm asking is, can we see the year in total this year, so we can, as we begin to talk about funding it, determine, maybe if we put further restrictions on what we will and will not fund, to let the system progress?
Yeah, we can look at something like that. We have to extract names.
Yeah, absolutely, anonymize it, yes.
Yep.
Don't even care about where the, the address had originated from, just where it wound up.
Destination, correct.
You know, doctor's office, department store, grocery store, Kehe, take your pick.
It's just going to have the coordinates, or it's going to have the street address. It's not going to say what, what that business is on the, on the actual spreadsheet.
That's fine.
I think that'll be acceptable. We can look that up. Thank you.
Whenever she said the, the Stone Belt would cover the ridership, does that mean the $3 fee? Not the whole $27 that it costs for the trip?
That's true.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Just the three. And I'm thinking maybe they could either pave the way, or they could have their workers, because when I worked there, we transported them where they needed to go ourselves. I've took them to the doctor many a times, so that's why I'm wondering if they could either just take it over that they're responsible to get them there, or else pay us the money for transporting them.
Those are definitely good questions. We still have an active motion.
Second the motion.
Dan, we are, second?
You ready for the vote?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trupps? Trupps Sager?
Yes.
I, I've not got my cheat sheet, so bear with me. Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
And Pam Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, my question to you is, do you want to use the restricted fund for the first payment in order to allow an additional appropriation to be done for the remaining? Or do you think we can avoid paying until we can accomplish an additional appropriation? Because, I mean, I don't have any appropriation. There is nothing appropriated to cover this expense, so...
I think this may be a case, once we get the invoice, then we'll need to put it on the council agenda and review it, and...
Paid in arrears, so we wouldn't get the bill until it comes out. Ask Chris, she's still in line.
Yeah, that's right. I am here, but I didn't want to, so it would be, you wouldn't get a bill until February for January services.
But that means our special appropriation...
We'd have to prepare it five weeks ahead of time?
Yeah, we have to run an ad in the paper 10 days before, and...
How would this be an appropriation other than a bill?
How would this be an appropriation, other than a bill?
Well, any bill, any bill that you have has to be paid from an appropriation.
Right.
So, what's your question?
Because we don't have an appropriations line for it. Okay, I see where you're going.
So, what we would need to do, at least, I'd say the first or second meeting in January, or first meeting probably, is put a kind of general appropriations for it.
I don't know if that gives her enough time, though.
Well, I mean, you...
Next meeting?
We do need to have an idea of how much you want to appropriate, if you want the whole three months. I mean, are you going to go $33,000? Are you going to wait and see? And then, that would really be helpful for the additional appropriation.
Do we not still have, we had at one point, but we may have closed out a council line item?
We have one in the town administrative budgets called Promotion of Town Business.
Yeah, this wouldn't be that. I don't think it fits the criteria. Did we not have a catch-all at one point in time where we reserved funds at the council's pleasure?
No.
So, we'll have to create a line item for this.
Can we see what the reversions is going to be at the end of the year? And then, is that going to give enough time to get it advertised, to pay this?
Don't you have to have 10 days, and then we've got two meetings, right?
How you fund it later is...
Yeah, it's 10 days to advertise, 10 days before your meeting, so we have to know what we want in that 10 days. And then, two meetings to prove it, and then after the council approves it, it's pretty fast with the DLGF now, through the gateway.
We can actually approve it in one meeting, too, correct?
Yes, and I mean, we might be able to do with a resolution, which would only require one meeting. So, the main thing is coming up with your amount. Once you know your amount, then you can start the procedure. But we do have to be approved for our 2024 budgets before we can do that. We haven't gotten that 1782 quite yet. It should be coming any day.
Okay. So, it looks like we'll be discussing this next meeting, too. And Mike, and any members of the council or public, do we need, I hate to use the term "study committee," but I don't know, or Mike, I'm not trying to throw work on you, but I can work the state aspect to see if we can get them to relent or whatever. Is, do you want a committee to help you? Or do you want to keep?
Well, we actually need to have a meeting with the county, excuse me, sooner than later, and decide how we format a committee. But we need to have a meeting, probably, we probably ought to have it in the next couple of weeks, which runs into Christmas, but we'll reach out to the county tomorrow.
And Chris, another thing, is it always the originating, the pickup place pays for the whole round trip?
So, it's the passenger, so whoever gets more time, yeah, the actual rider is the one that pays for the trip, or if there is a service that otherwise would pay for that trip. But the way this, you know, the estimation, remember, was about a pickup or drop-off, one way of it being in Ellisville, so it wasn't both places being in Ellisville. It was one way, yeah.
Okay. All right. I think we've done all we can for this tonight. I'm, I'll tell you, and I kind of get this vibe from the council, too, and everybody, this isn't the most, oh, my gosh, we've solved this problem. Alls we've done is follow our, I mean, we pushed it forward, but eventually, and I agree with Scott, Mike, everybody, we have to figure out whether we're in this business or not. And if we are, when it comes to budgeting time, if we have to fund it for a full year, Scott's absolutely right, something, we're not going to be able to do something we planned to. And that usually means personnel. So, let's hope we can get some good news beginning of next year, or earlier. All right, new business, 2024 agreement to provide community access television service to town of Ellisville. We kind of touched on this, but Sandy, do you want to?
Well, it's just, the agreement is a standard one they issue every year. We do have enough budgeted to cover this contractual amount, and we know the services that they provide, so. And there is nothing in here, in the agreement, it's pretty straightforward about maintaining our records, so maybe that's something that we should ask them to include in the agreement.
Darla, do you think that would be feasible to do that?
I will double-check the language in the statute.
Okay.
And review that new legislation, if you would.
Yeah, that's what I am.
Okay, thanks.
So, should we table this till next meeting? Because we would be approving it as-is.
Correct. It's probably not a bad idea to table it to the next meeting.
There have been a lot of solicitations come out to provide those services. Because I thought we were protected with the CATS, I'd never, you know...
No, it makes sense why, I would have thought the same thing until...
Years ago, we did have a person that came and gave us a quote, and it was substantial. So, just, you don't know till you find out, so.
All right, so, do we have any public comment on CATS? Council action?
Motion, David.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our privilege of the floor. Anybody in the public want to say anything or add anything? Seeing none, jump to the supervisors.
I'll go first. Today, the department head meeting, we talked about the census, and I think there's a vehicle to have it redone, and we, we're going to take a quote and see how much it costs. So, we'll bring it up before the board. Second, my utility add-on. So, this has been coming out in water bill. Our water bills have a white bar where you can put announcements and information. And so, the EPA nationwide has started on a project to determine how much lead, it's called the Lead and Topper Room, but this is really to let make lead lines in water systems. So, we're pretty sure we know how many lead lines are in our system, which is zero. I've been here since 1998, and with my background at CBU, I'm pretty sure of our information, but that's not going to, has to be, we have to incorporate what the citizens can tell us. We know anybody after 1988 that's built a house is exempt from this, because it would have to be pre-1988-built and had a water line installed to be part of what might be a lead line replacement. If you are after 1988 and you want to answer this, we would appreciate it, just so we can eliminate you from the list of 5,500-plus customers we have. We're utilizing ZipTility. They're helping us through this process, and we are on board to be through Phase 1, going into Phase 2, which would be when we start actually digging lines up, and potholing, working out in the field to make this happen. But every time one of our customers takes part in the survey, they're helping us out, and they're helping themselves out. We just went through a rate increase for our water. This was not in that. And so, monies we spend now will be added to. This is one of the first things, we didn't really, we couldn't process how much it was going to cost, because it kind of changed the rules from time to time. But if you help us, then you're helping the rate system not have to bear a burden of us coming out and potholing our side of the line. We also have to pothole the customer's side of the line. And so, anything you can do to help us reduces the cost per house. And so, you can take this, all you have to do is scan the QR code and take the survey. It's three questions, and I did it myself today, so that means any living organism on the earth can do it, because I'm the least tech person there is. So, I please, please, please take part. If you have any questions, call the utilities office, and we'll help you through it. But we'd really like, we've not had, this has been on our bill for two months, and we've just not had much participation. We'll do it without you if we have to, but every time somebody helps us, it saves us a few hundred dollars, if not, quite a few hundred dollars.
For clarification, if your house was built after 1988, you're in the clear. You don't have to participate?
You don't have to, but we went through a process where we've identified all those houses, but if we've missed any of them, or they don't show up on our list of the 1988 or after-built houses, then we may, they may be in there. And if it's just a few, then you're talking, now you're talking a few thousand, and if it's two dozen, you're talking 10,000 or 15,000. So, anybody and everybody, we'd really like having some redundancy. It won't hurt anything.
But if you're before 1988?
You absolutely need to help us. If you don't, we'll be out anyway to see you. And the other thing is, we won't be digging in your yard if you help us. We're good at it, and you don't want a scenario.
All right.
Yes.
Were we supposed to get that form in the mail?
You got it on your bill. You've been getting it for two months now.
But now, my bill goes automatically, is automatically paper deducted?
Call 1-2-876-2297, and we'll set you up.
You still get your bill in the mail, even when it's automatically deducted. You still get your paper bill in the mail.
Because I don't recall seeing that.
The question is if you have a paper bill, or if you're signed to provide that. Have to protect it as... You still get the paper bill, so I'd suggest you open it. It's always good. I always pay my own line, but I want to make sure that something didn't happen, and so... All right. Yeah, come up to the speaker, please, because I know, and I'd already opened up the public comment, and usually we don't do this, but because of this issue, I think the public might have some questions, so I'm kind of being flexible.
Just clarification, you said houses. I'm assuming you're also talking about businesses.
Oh, thank you, yeah, I can leave that out. All right.
All right, Jimmy?
On the lighter side.
Good.
Santa on Sales Street came off real well Saturday. Chris and my lieutenant Zach Michael put together a plan. The fire department, police department worked real well to block the streets off. Kip had his men down there to put the barricades out. Everything went well. Had a good crowd, decent weather. We had the history center open for about three or four hours. It had a lot of people come in, so I was real pleased with that. So, it was a good weekend. Again, we cooperated really well, so I'm just so happy about that, so.
Jimmy, I'd like to say, too, I got to see the SRO car for the first time. I love that design, the edge that was on there. Looks really nice.
We'll have three of them up there in about a month, probably, so.
But they're not going to like racing? I mean, they look like racing cars. They really do.
No, we won't be doing that, so.
It makes money that way, maybe pay for rural transit.
It'd be nice to have three Mark cars up there that wanted each building, so.
Kevin, Kip?
Just want to remind everybody that this is the last week for brush, or sorry, leaf pickup, Friday, December 15th, so if everybody can get their leaves out before then, we'll pick them up. If they still have some after that, they can put them in a biodegradable bag. Give us a call, we'll come pick them up.
All right, Denise?
Oh, honey, thank you.
Sandy?
I'd just like to invite you all to our Christmas luncheon, which is Friday at noon, and it's a fun time, and all employees come, and it'd really be nice to have the town council there, too.
Is this the one we're serving steak and lobster?
No, you, no, you missed that one. That was a while back.
Never seen you before.
Okay, darn it. All right, any council comments?
I'd just like to thank the crews for putting up the holiday decoration. They were out doing that several days. Looks good.
Yes.
The stars on the flagpost are a nice addition.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are. Pop when you come into town. Anybody else? All right, with that being said, call this meeting adjourned.